August twenty first, two thousand twenty five. Roll call please, Donna.
Gordon Wilkinson.
Here.
Jim Carter.
Here.
Nate Martin.
Here.
Now I'll read the notices. Over this. Do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance and direction as we go about this public hearing today. We thank the good folks of Orsted County that have come out here to testify and let us know what they think. We ask that everybody please travel safe getting home after this is over. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this afternoon. I'll now read the notices of the public hearing. The Board of Washington County Commissioners of Washington County will hold a public hearing on August twenty first, two thousand twenty five, at the hour of four P M. To receive public comment upon proposed ordinance amending Title One, Chapter Seven of the Washington County Code regarding the Planning and Zoning Commission. The ordinance in its entirety is available for review in the clerk's office or on the county website. The public is invited to comment on the proposed ordinance changes at the Bendville three oh nine State Street, Weezer, Idaho. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. Written comment is to be received at the clerk's office by August fifteenth, two thousand twenty five, five P M. Any person needing special accommodations to participate in this hearing should contact the clerk's office seven days prior to the meeting. Two oh eight, four one four, two zero nine two, two fifty six East Court Street, Weezer, Idaho. Jim Harvard, Chairman, Board of Washington County Commissioners, attest, Donna White. We've received some written comments. They will be on file, they'll be available at the courthouse. And now, what we'd like to do, we have people, the people that have signed in, some of you have requested to talk. So what we're going to do now is we will start that process. I ask that you stay on track. There's a three minute time period. And we shall begin. Carolyn Keys.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Carolyn Keys from Midvale. I'm here to support the proposal of having only five members on the Planning and Zoning Board. Five members seems to be a very good workable number for a small county. Two years' residence is also acceptable to me. By the time you've lived in the county for two years, you should have a pretty good understanding in regard to the building and growth issues that your county has. But what I believe is most important, besides these proposed changes, is that you Commissioners choose individuals who hold the law in high regard and will follow the legal counsel of our county prosecutor. We do not need people on the P N Z Board who think they're smarter than everyone else. Thank you.
Larry Markle, do you have a question mark?
No.
No? Blake Coats.
Commissioners, I'm Blake Coats, here to speak against the proposal. I don't know all the details of how these commissions will work, but I see it as a bigger issue. Do we want our county to end up like Ada and Canyon County and be filled with housing? As a resident here practically my whole life, I feel that our special rural atmosphere is so important and that we need to make sure that we take steps conscientiously to preserve the character of our county. And we can't let the idea that our neighbors don't matter to us when we follow our own rights. I mean, we have responsibilities to the whole county. And so I think that this issue may just be sort of a cover for the kinds of changes that some would like to have within our particular county. And so I would urge that we take care of our neighbors, we think more broadly for our future, and that we hope that our grandchildren will bless us for our actions today. Thank you.
Jerry Souier.
Thank you. My name is Jerry Souier. I've had the honor of serving two separate times on the Planning and Zoning Commission. It takes a great deal of dedication, great deal of time, and I'm really proud that I got to serve with some incredible people. I do have some minutes from the clerk's notes from July tenth regarding Mr. Marvin's comments. He said, "These are just my opinions. The Board of County Commissioners is considering restructuring." I thought, well, the Board of County Commissioners is three people, so I was concerned about that. And then it said, "We currently have a nine-member board becoming difficult to manage. One example, meetings are longer due to more participants speaking." Participants speaking, I think that's what we're supposed to do in asking and making sure everyone has all their questions answered by the applicant. Not that close. Sure, thank you. So I said, "When did," I thought to myself, "When did P N Z not come to a consensus?" Thank you so much, that's so much better for me. Okay, thank you, Robert. Also, there was a question about getting a quorum. I can't remember when we didn't have a quorum, I really can't. One of the other comments was, "One of the disadvantages of a larger board, we pay seventy cents per mile for travel in person." Someone said that came out of some other fund. And there's other costs for training. I don't remember the last training. We should have them, we've had them years ago. Jerry Mason and our former legal counsel came around the country of Idaho and trained Commissioners in Planning and Zoning. We haven't had that in years. And then Mr. Marvin said, "We would have more staff resources supporting longer meetings if we had shorter, more efficient meetings. And then it would be less costly for the county because the Planning and Zoning Administrator and her associates also have to stay later." I just confirmed that they all do it comp time, there's no extra dollars spent. It's the same week with Planning and Zoning meeting or without. So, the other thing is, the entire commission was removed en masse without an identifying cause. That looks like an abuse of authority and a violation of principles outlined. If the members believe their rights are violated, we have the right to pursue in court, as others have, including a claim under U S courts, which is a federal issue. I think you have one right now in front of you, nineteen eighty-three federal rights statute, seeking remedies such as reinstatement, injunction relief, and potentially attorney fees. I don't want to be reinstated the way I was removed, that was obviously not correct. We're supposed to be removed for cause. That's all I have to say, thank you for listening.
Ron Jaeger.
It's been almost a month and a half since I got to meet you guys. So, back in January and February, when our first meeting with the prosecuting attorney was at Planning and Zoning. People don't know, I was a member of the Planning and Zoning. We had a conversation with him and people asked him questions about some of the stuff he said during his campaign. And so he said, "No, Planning and Zoning is all good, we're doing a good job, everything's going fine." After the meeting, he spoke to a person and he said, "We got to get rid of all these people and bring it down to five people." So we fast forward to last month and Mr. Marvin came up with the statement that his, he and his staff came up with, you know, that we need to make it less people and, of course, everybody knows that he fired a whole bunch of us. The reasons we're to make it, you know, is it more manageable, is that more manageable or more controllable? This county is a very diverse county and I've seen over the years that the more people and more diversity we have in the people on there as far as backgrounds and jobs and that kind of thing, we get a better, a better answer to the question we're working on. We rarely ever, we almost always are unanimous and we don't have very long, we keep getting shorter and shorter. As far as, I mean, I said, you know, the cost of the money, well, you know, the bulk of our mileage is paid by the fees charged by the applicants. To go to two years from five years requirement, you know, my opinion is it takes more than two years just to get up to speed on when you're on Planning and Zoning, let alone, you know, being in the county for that long. You got, we need people with some history, we need some people that have been on there a long time, we need new pieces too. This couldn't have come at a worse time in our county. We have a disaster going on with the codes. The Planning and Zoning has been shut out of changing those codes and fixing those codes, which they should have been the first people addressed to. Pardon me?
One minute.
No, actually, we have three seconds.
All right, thank you for.
Karen Bailey.
See if we can get this working right. Can everybody hear me okay?
No.
Am I speaking loud enough now?
Better.
Okay. I'm Karen Bailey, I live out in District Two by the airport. Thank you for entertaining me coming up here. So much has gone on in three minutes, just can't get it. What I'd like to know is, why do we need a Planning and Zoning Committee anyway? We have all the codes in place. You have a council that is wonderful and strong, they're appointed by the people, voted in by the people. This committee is appointed, they serve at your request. They're not voted in. So I don't understand what's going on with the authority that they feel that they have, this group, although I do believe that it's important to have council about changes that may be imminent. Obviously, growth is big, Idaho is awesome, I absolutely love it, and I've watched California be ruined and ran here because I love rural and I'd like to see it preserved. There's so many things that could be changed with the way that people are appointed, the length of time. I think five should be plenty. People need to learn, four years seems appropriate, but if you're going to have four years with everybody coming in at the same time, then all your, all your learning is gone if they don't stay, because they have a choice, for that second term. So you might think about staggered time periods for people, that's an option. I found in working with Procter Gammel, worldwide, well-known company, when you go into management or you're working in some position like this, three years is what your term is before you change, move to a different position. Because one year's learning, second year is really rolling, being efficient, coming up with new stuff, and your third year is a flat line, so you are moved. Not because you failed, but because it's what happens. People get to know you, they don't work as hard for you, people are jockeying for positions. That's all I wanted to say. I think five is plenty and I'd like to see something successful happen, it's been quite a mess. Thank you so much.
You have one minute. Oh, my sister's just the one.
Oh, it's not the yellow light. Well, I think I said it, I think I said it. I'm just giving you some other options, other ideas. And I think your codes, why are your codes insufficient? I've read many of them, they're very clear. I think your council, if he can consult with a real estate specialist, attorney, might be able to answer your questions and help you in that manner too. Or you could have another process that occurs, you don't have to have this particular committee. And I thank you for your time.
Tony Edmiston.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, and thank you for the opportunity to offer my two cents on the proposed changes to County Ordinance One seven two. My name is Tony Edmiston and I live at five ninety-eight Pioneer Road in Weezer. I'm addressing you today as a private citizen, in no way affiliated with my role as Chairman of the Weezer Planning and Zoning Commission. I have a long history with this ordinance dating back to my terms as a Washington County Commissioner and feel it served our county well for more than twenty-five years. The only change I would suggest would be to provide a couple of seats for residents of two years or longer. This said, it's unclear to me what your purpose is in modifying this ordinance in the first place. With all due respect, and I mean this sincerely as colleagues and friends, the drama which has led to this day was not caused by our former Planning and Zoning Commissioner or Administrator, who were all doing what code and policy required them to do. For the thirty years since I was first elected to the Board of County Commissioners, our county has been blessed to have dedicated and passionate volunteers, invest countless hours of research and education on which to make sound recommendations to our Board of County Commissioners in land use matters. That was their sole purpose. People like John Trail, Cecilia Sauchin, Connie Rosar, and Ron Jaeger, among many others who come to mind. Their combined experience, training, and institutional memory far exceed what the present Board, or even those on which I served, come anywhere near to matching and they deserve our respect and appreciation. Instead, the current Commissioners were summarily discharged only days after a public disciplining, with no explanation to the public, you are now seeking input fund for changes to this ordinance. Will it really matter what we recommend today? Or are you again just going through the motions to an already concluded outcome? This is not to say other Boards, my own included, didn't have differences with our Commissioners or Administrators. We also had our Sheriff disgruntled citizens who didn't agree with the land use regulations the other ninety-five percent of us supported. We worked through them because we had a shared understanding of the intent behind our code backed up by legal counsel who was there from the beginning and not for just a few months. One of the greatest assets of any organization is its institutional memory. It's how we don't keep reinventing the wheel. Reducing the commission size shrinks that pool of resources and institutional memory. Perhaps that's your goal, because as elected officials come and go, we've been lucky to have tenured planning officials who pass on their skills and knowledge to those who succeed them. As a Weezer resident for forty-four years, I have seen how the land use decisions in our county impact the vitality and quality of life beyond just those who live in the country. You were elected by every voter in this county. Am I out of time? Can I, you were voted by every.
Jeff Williams.
Hello, I come from a background of county planning and zoning in Payette County and city government with the City of Payette. I have some challenges about the comment that you don't need an advisory board for planning and zoning. I guess if the Commissioners want to have a lot longer meeting and they don't want the input from the zoning board, I guess that's what you can choose to do, but I don't think any one of us know everything and having advisors is probably pretty important. Another issue that I've observed as a Realtor is the, and with my background in government, is executive sessions for zoning issues? Makes no sense whatsoever. Executive sessions are for contracts, personnel, litigation, and yeah, what I just said. How a zoning issue fixes, comes into that play, I have no idea. Transparency in government, I think is vitally important and having executive sessions for zoning issues seems like it's not really transparent to your constituents. Thank you very much.
Jody Mink.
Good afternoon, my name is Jody Mink, I am a rancher in Cambridge. Thank you to the Commissioners for allowing this open forum for residents of our county to express concerns regarding your recent decisions. I really do appreciate your time today. I oppose the proposed ordinance changes in its entirety. By decreasing the number of voting members from nine to five, you are simply deciding to not listen to key stakeholders in our county. A minimum of nine members is a must to ensure that when decisions are made, there is adequate representation from all walks of life in Washington County. Our county is way too diverse to simply pick five individuals for such a critical segment as a part of our county government. By keeping nine voting members, it will ensure that all voices are heard and that we are meeting the needs of all of the residents in our county. I urge you also to maintain the five-year requirement. I truly believe this is the minimum number of years that would allow an individual enough exposure to understand the economic, social, and historical makeup of our entire county. This also helps build strong roots in our community to ensure that there is a true drive to make the county better for generations to come. I wasn't born in this county, but I got here as soon as I could, about twenty-five years ago. I love economics and I saw the value of all facets of Washington County that was linked to agriculture. I grew up in Twin Falls County, that has been handed down a huge hit to all ag industries by not having a strong Planning and Zoning Commission that was backed by the Commissioners. I don't want our county to endure those hits. I have always, we have always been a county that was progressive while maintaining a strong awareness of our forefathers' insights to the preservation of agricultural land and the importance of ag cash receipts and how they play a role in our economic health of our county. Please don't hastily disregard history or make decisions that could impact our next generation of farm and ranch owners as well as agribusinessmen in a negative way. My generation, my kids, and now my grandkids are trusting that elected leaders of Washington County continue to make sound decisions that are for the benefit of our entire community. Thanks for your time.
Mark Mora.
Good afternoon, my name is Mark Mora. My wife and I, Cody, were able to move home fifteen years ago to work and live on our family ranch. We're both fifth-generation farmer and ranchers and our kids are going to be sixth-generation agriculturists. I grew up in Nevada on a farm and ranch and coming to U of I in ninety-nine. Ever since, I've called Idaho home. Since moving to Washington County in two thousand and ten, I've had the privilege to be able to volunteer my time on many boards and community organizations that make Washington County so strong, special, and a great place to raise a family. Including coaching youth baseball, high school, middle school, and youth wrestling, Cambridge Volunteer Fire and E M T, Washington County Farm Bureau, Little Weezer Irrigation, and last but not least, a past member of Washington County Planning and Zoning. The structure and importance of Planning and Zoning Commissions should have nine members to ensure a balanced and efficient decision-making process. This number is large enough to represent a variety of perspectives within a community, but not so large that it becomes unwieldy or difficult to manage. A larger board, for instance, can lead to quorum issues and make it challenging to reach consensuses. While a smaller board may not adequately represent the diverse interests of a community, a nine-board member structure is a common standard that strikes a balance, allowing for robust discussion, a broad range of viewpoints on land use and development issues. The importance of a diverse board. A diverse board is crucial for any organization's success. A diverse board is composed of individuals from different backgrounds, including varied ethnicities, genders, ages, professional expertise. The diversity brings a multitude of benefits, including enhanced decision-making. A diverse group is less prone to group think. Different life and perspective leads to a more thorough analysis of problems and a wider range of potential solutions. Better risk management. A diverse board can identify and mitigate risks that a small board might overlook. Different backgrounds and expertise can help the county anticipate a wider range of challenges from social to regulatory changes. Stronger county governance. A diverse board is more likely to challenge status quo and ensure accountability, leading to more robust county and ethical processes. Enhanced county reputation. Having a diverse team signals to residents you are committed to fairness, which can boost its reputation and attract top talent. As far as changing code to the current board number, I strongly disagree with the changing of nine to five. I strongly believe the number of years that you must be a resident from five to two is for one reason. There's somebody in the community that the board must really want to drop that number so low. I assume that you already have a board member in mind and that individual hasn't lived in Washington County that long. There are plenty of great community members that have lived here for more than five years. Thank you for your time.
Frank Schwartz.
Good afternoon, I'm Frank Schwartz, I'm from Cambridge and I appreciate the opportunity to speak this afternoon. I oppose the proposed changes to membership and residency requirements in the ordinance. Please leave Ordinance One seven two unchanged and, or with nine P N Z members and a five-year residency requirement. Nine years allows the selection of a diverse and broad representation from across the county. The breadth of those perspectives will result in better decisions. A five-year residency allows people to gain at least a limited understanding and knowledge of the county and people, while two years is insufficient. Five years is at least two years, so it meets the state law at sixty-seven dash six five zero four. At least two years is plain English, it seems to be important to the county attorney. It's irresponsible to be wasting taxpayer time and money to pursue a change to this ordinance when there are big issues with the county code and multiple lawsuits. Don't fix what isn't broken. Did you know, firing the P N Z Commission violates Idaho Statute sixty-seven dash six five zero nine and was illegal? The Commissioner's basis for firing was to reduce the P N Z numbers and increase efficiency. Commissioners implemented this action to reduce numbers without a change to Section one dash seven dash two and without public hearings. Ordinance One seven two requires P N Z appointments to be made by the Chairman and occur in March of each year with an April beginning date. And that's in your second paragraph up there. So if Commissioners remove, or the removal action's valid, no replacement P N Z members can be appointed until March of two thousand and twenty-six with an April twenty-six start date. An ordinance change is required to deviate from those dates. Our ordinances do not provide an alternate process for meeting the requirements without a P N Z Commission. The lack of a P N Z Commission prevents Washington County from, Government from fulfilling its duties to the people. Many actions by our County Commissioners are violating Codes Sections One seven three, One seven Many actions by our county commissioners are violating codes sections 173, 174, and With a P and Z commission to work on, needed changes to titles five and six, changes to the county, or without, changes to the county ordinance must be put on hold and probably won't be completed until 12 months from now. The need to immediately clarify the code and close loopholes is important. Please leave 172 unchanged. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Beth Schwartz, and I live in Cambridge. And thank you for letting me speak today. I oppose the proposed...
Can you give us the mic, please?
Can you help me? Thank you. All right. I oppose the proposed changes to the ordinance. Please leave ordinance 172 unchanged with nine P and Z members and a five-year residency requirement. In the last couple of months, two of our Washington County commissioners have been stating that most or many counties in the state have been planning and zoning commissions limited to five members. I questioned whether this could be true, so I researched the numbers of planning and zoning commission members in every county in our state. What I found for planning, zoning, and combined planning and zoning commissions is as follows. Only six out of 44 counties in the state are limited to five members. Eight counties have nine members, like Washington County. Nine counties allow up to 12 members. 14 counties have seven members. One county, Limhite, has at least six members. One county, Camas, has four members. One county, Lincoln, uses their three county commissioners as their P and Z. Idaho County does not do planning or zoning. I was unable to obtain the information for Custer, Gooding, and Jefferson counties in a timely manner. Some counties have planning boards that are separate from their zoning boards. Some counties allow ranges of numbers of P and Z members rather than a fixed number. Some P and Z boards are assigned by districts, such as Abingham County, with nine members, three from each district. Some P and Z boards have current vacancies. The bottom line is that the prior commissioner's statements regarding counties having only five P and Z members is not accurate. Commissioners are elected to do the homework that is required in order to provide accurate information to the citizens and make sound decisions. One concern I have is that by decreasing our current number of P and Z members from nine to five, how do we assure a fair representation across the county? Having nine members allows for a fair representation from all areas of the county. How would you propose to select a five-member P and Z board? Another important fact for everyone to remember is that True Paris campaigned on the authority of county commissioners to dissolve planning and zoning commissions. A video recording of this can be found online with a simple Google search of the Washington County and Meet the Candidate Forum held on April 17, 2024, and posted by Living in the News. You can hear True's own assessment of the need for planning and zoning. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, as one of your commissioners was recently told, we are your neighbors, coworkers, and friends. Many of us grew up with you, attended the same schools, met you at social functions, worked together for the good of our communities. Today, I'm presenting petitions with 228 signatures of some of those neighbors, coworkers, and friends that strongly oppose the proposed code changes to the planning and zoning commission. The reasons stated for reducing the number of commission members were simply untrue. Here are the untruths. It was difficult to have a quorum available. There was dissension and decisions were not reached easily. It cost the taxpayers too much money. This is the truth. There were only extremely rare instances where a quorum was not available, never during the time when I was serving on the planning and zoning board. There was not wide dissension among commission members. They discussed, and yes, sometimes strongly disagreed with each other, looked at code together, and then often voted unanimously. More than half the mileage reimbursement, which was all the commission members received, was collected from application fees. And it was true that each commission member served because they deeply care about Washington Something else that is true, this has been a plan that's been in the works since before the election. It has been planned and orchestrated. There, I said it. Gentlemen, again, I implore you to represent all the people of the county. After this is over, we will still be your neighbors, we will still be your co-laborers, and hopefully, still your friends. Please listen to all of us. Can I present this to you, Mr. Harbin?
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Tina Watkins, and I have lived in Washington County since 1995. I appreciate the opportunity to share my concerns regarding the proposed planning and zoning code changes. The changes themselves are not necessarily troubling. My concern lies in the context surrounding them. Property splits have been a source of disagreement in Washington County for decades. Multiple commissions have debated this issue, and that process of deliberation and compromise is both normal and healthy in a Republican society. What is not normal is the unprecedented action to abruptly dismiss all nine members of the planning and zoning commission. The planning and zoning chairman and administrator were threatened with civil and even criminal charges for expressing their views. Such actions give the appearance that dissent is being silenced rather than addressed through open dialogue. Now the proposal is to reduce the commission in size and allow newly arrived residents greater influence, raising even more questions. These decisions have taken place with very little public discussion. I have attended many meetings virtually, and what I have observed are motions prepared in advance, read aloud, and passed with not depth of discussion amongst you. There has been little transparent debate about alternatives, advantages, disadvantages, concerns. Key questions remain unanswered to me. Why the termination of all of them? What problem is a smaller commission meant to solve? What evidence shows this approach would improve outcomes? Without such discussion, it appears decisions are being made behind closed doors rather than through public collaboration. Now that 11 individuals have been removed, you are in a position to appoint a small select group to move forward, but forward to what? That has not been made clear by you. To citizens like myself, this raises serious red flags and suggests a process driven less by collaboration and more by control. I respectfully urge you to pause these amendments. I oppose them. Instead, I ask you to return to the work you committed to over a year ago, reviewing and updating property split policies in our Washington County code. That is the real issue at hand. True leadership is measured not by the ability to silence opposition, but by a willingness to engage with it. Washington County deserves leaders who model transparency, embrace debate, and work toward solutions that reflect the will of the people they serve. I ask you to honor that responsibility and choose a path of openness, collaboration, and fairness. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Nancy Williams. I live at 1627 Gentry Lane. Need I say more? I think that the commissioners should stay the way they are, and I respectfully ask if you've read all completely what you have posted and if you endeavor to follow them exactly. Thank you.
I didn't sign to speak.
Jerome Grandy.
I live out on, in the Weezer River Road, we ranch out there. I, I'm against changing, making the changes you propose, and I think that, I think the importance of a planning and zoning commission is really important, and it's important to you, because they're here to advise you whether you agree with their thoughts or not. At least it exposes you to the, what people think. Something that really bothers me about this whole deal, to be honest with you, is the thought of litigating or threatening litigation against people that are in these positions to help you. And I don't know codes, and I don't know how all this is going on, but I do know that somebody has to pay for this nonsense, and I think it's me, and I think that needs to stop. And I think there's a better path to solving this solution than through litigation against these people. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, for this opportunity to testify. Can you hear me? My name is Sabrina Young. I come before you as a property owner and a citizen of Washington County. I respectfully oppose these proposed changes. At a time when growth and land issues demand greater citizen involvement, I believe these revisions would do the exact opposite. It would be reducing citizen participation. State law requires that a planning and zoning commission consists of not less than three and not more than 12 members, and must have at least two years of residency prior to appointment. Our county planning and zoning commission is a critical part of our community. They assist in land use decision-making, they guide comprehensive planning, they review zoning ordinances, conduct public hearings, and ensure compliance with local and state laws. Because of this, a larger commission is not a burden, it is a safeguard. I believe a nine-member commission provides broader representation, more thorough deliberation, and greater accountability, while also reducing the risk of biases. Lowering the residency requirement from five to two diminishes the long-term local knowledge that is vital to the work of this commission. I believe five years allows a thorough understanding of our county's unique land use challenges, history, and community goals and priorities. Fair and transparent land use decisions require diverse and broad representation. Please reject these changes and protect the structure that's already in place. Thank you for your time.
My name's Gilbert Ball. I live in Washington County up on Mann Creek. I'm a farmer, rancher, and I have businesses related to agriculture in town. Thank God I came along late after everybody else had presented about everything I would like to have discussed, and my position is I'm in opposition to the change in the ordinances. Can I, I'd like to yield Mr. Williams, if he's still here. Jeff, did you leave?
I'm here.
No. Pay it, planning and zoning. How many commissioners do they have?
Twelve.
Twelve, so it's not unruly, and do you feel it's unwieldy, or do you feel it's fair representation for the county to have? Can I not do that? Because that needs to be brought in here so that you can deliberate that. We have nine. To cut it to five, I do not feel we're going to adequately represent the county and all its interests in the different areas. Also, nine will provide you with a good, broad input and more diversity, and if five would, yeah, it would be manageable, but five might be a controlling interest on other powers that be, so I don't want to see it reduced down below that. Requirement for membership on the commission, can you not hear me? Requirement for the membership on the commission of the five years, I feel that to me that shows someone's been here, they plan on staying here, they have vested interest in the community, and they will live with the consequences and decisions they make if they're on that board. Thank you for your time.
Yes, I'm Dan Warren, Cambridge, Idaho, and I have something to read here, but most of it's been covered. I would just like to say I'm opposed to what you have up on the screen there. I believe the old board should be reinstated, so to speak. Your planning and zoning board should be reinstated, and I think apologies made even on that, because I think they were dismissed, and they shouldn't have been, and so I'd like to see that happen. I guess I'll let it go at that.
Marty Van Ness.
I'm Marty Van Ness. I live in Weezer, Idaho. I oppose these changes, and I think everybody said it really well. I'm not going to tell you anything you haven't heard. You guys were elected to this position, and I just hope that you listen to what everybody's telling you, and that's it.
Dan Carlson, did you want to speak? Chris Kristofferson.
Chris Kristofferson, 354 Kraus Road, just out by the airport. I live in Commissioner Marvin's district, and thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for taking this opportunity during the day when a portion of the public could be here to present. As we talk about diversity, as been mentioned many times, we don't have very much of a diverse crowd, and I think unfortunately that's because of the time of day and the demographics of this meeting in which many people work and have livelihood. But I do want to thank you for this opportunity to come here and speak. It's been mentioned through many of the blogs online and the discussions regarding this proposal that we don't need to fix something that's not broken, or we don't need change for change's sake. Well, we never plant a tree without ever trimming it and expecting it, pruning it back, and expecting it to give fruit every year. I know two of the commissioners on this, on this board have been farming. Do you guys farm the exact same way that was always done 40 years ago without ever changing? Is there many people in this room that actually drive the same vehicle that they drove 40 years ago? Most people can't say yes to any one of those questions. We've evolved. We've changed. Our environment is changing around us. People that have moved here have changed. People that moved here bring in outside experiences and input and knowledge that may be an asset to prevent what is, the concerns are happening in this county. I am in support of this proposed change. I would like to see it reduced to five, from nine, to not do away with the claim of diversity, but make it a smaller... but make it a smaller manageable board that goes back to the purpose of what a planning and zoning committee is supposed to be, and what some of their duties are. And get away from what our neighbors think, but look at the codes and the statutes that we have to look by, but also ensuring that we're preventing overpopulation, we're preventing damage to our county, and we're preserving the way of life that we've all moved here to be. But I do want to add that it does feel that we all have some form of, I won't take that thought. But if we don't manage growth in a, in a diverse way, a way that benefits the way of life we have, growth will manage us. And unfortunately, because of lack of action, be it through the planning and zoning commission or the commissioners themselves, of managing growth in the last twenty-five to thirty years, that is what has put us into this situation, and now we are, we are charged with lawsuits costing us as the taxpayers. Thank you.
Rick Brook.
My name's Rich Brook, Fifty Hill Road. Lived here about twenty-seven years. Maybe wrong, I'll lose count. We grow tree fruit, we're farmers, have been the whole time. Yeah, I'm opposed to the changes. I think the reorganization of P&amp;Z should be stopped now, and all former members and policies need to be reinstated. I, I'm sitting here listening and thinking about all of this, and I'm going, really, you guys, all three of you got together and just said, "Let's fire them all"? You know, I've seen, I've been at Penn plant, P&amp;Z. I've had to come to you guys sometimes for final approval, but it always seemed to work pretty good. And I'm wondering, why are we changing? What is the motivation? You know, I didn't, I don't see the issues that seem to be talked about that, you know, somehow they're not getting it done. I found when I went before them, not only as someone commenting, I found them to be very responsive and helpful in all of their ways. And, and, you know, I can't imagine that, that all nine of them didn't have input that you guys and former board members, commissioners valued. I just, you know, I've come and watched you guys with your deliberations too, and I'm going, what's, there's something that I'm not getting, because it, and I'm really disappointed in what I'm hearing and reading in the newspaper over the last, how many months? Since some of this new stuff has been going on, this newfound legal opinions that go against years of precedence, they don't need to be followed, they need to be countermanded by legislation and codes that reflect what the people that elected you support. We don't, you know, this thing of you can just go out and create a twenty-acre lot and have it buildable. Has anybody checked if they have water? Or are we just gonna, and the easements are in? There's no review, it's just like, okay, just make twenty-acre building sites all over the place. And then people come in and go, "Buy these", and they think they can do whatever they want, and they just find that they don't have easements, they don't have, you know, it's, I think we need to do better. And I oppose the changes.
Cecilia Sockston.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I am Cecilia Sockston. Based on my personal experience of being a past member of Washington County Planning and Zoning Commission, I believe that reducing this membership down to five would handicap it from adequately giving the county commissioners good, sound recommendations in land use issues. The purpose of Planning and Zoning Commission is to do research for the county commissioners and give them recommendations based on findings in three different land use areas. First, applications for subdivisions, special use permits and variances. They must comply with all ordinances and regulations, not only those found in our county laws, but other state and district laws, regulations. Second, zone request changes. Any zoning changes must be in compliance with the county's comprehensive plan, which identifies priority areas for change. And third, making changes or updating current county ordinances or the comprehensive plan. Again, restrictions placed by the state and other districts must be adhered to. The county can adopt stricter regulations, but they cannot be more lenient. The responsibilities of planning and zoning is no small task. As fact-finders, they have a lot of research to do. They also need to have a broad familiarity of the county. P&amp;Z isn't about being popular or liked. They are supposed to be neutral, open to other points of view. The board needs a well-rounded, roundedness in different areas of education, experience, and land use issues. They expect opposition, so they need to listen, discern, and be thorough. Planning and zoning isn't supposed to judge the worthiness, need, or popularity of land use issues, only that all regulations are being satisfied. Planning and zoning members are heavies for you. They are the first to investigate, gathering the most information. They are also the first opportunity for the general public to express their opinions on the record. The final decisions on land use issues are the sole responsibility of you, the county commissioners. You have the right on all issues, and the requirement by state law on some issues to hold a second public hearing where both sides of an issue have another chance to provide evidence before making your decision. We need more, not less, people evaluating the land use proposals to help prevent something being overlooked. The residents deserve the thoroughness that can be achieved with a larger planning and zoning commission. Please let the tool of the state be given to you to help negotiate your permission land use rules, be the sharpest knife in the drawer for the benefit of the citizens.
Kirk Chandler.
Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to just start out by saying that we live in a republic that's based on laws. You were elected by the people to uphold those laws, and you take an oath to uphold the Constitution. And part of that is the state code is what counties are organized under. And so the, the two-year provision in the code change is to bring our county code into compliance with state code that we're organized under. And then the other part of the nine representatives that go onto five, the purpose, like was stated in the last testimony, the purpose of planning and zoning is to review with an applicant as to whether or not they have complied with everything in the code. And so, you know, like was stated, the law needs to be followed. And I think, you know, you understand, because of lawsuits and everything that we're against now, the recommendations and the actions of the planning and zoning committee and refusing to listen to our prosecutor, who we're taught in our, in our meetings that we need to follow, have put us in a position that we're in now. So five representatives on that board appointed by you would be ample to decide whether or not an applicant has complied with the code and to give you a recommendation, not a decision as to whether to approve or deny, but a recommendation as to whether they have complied with the code. So I think a lot of what has gone on is a misunderstanding of the commission's responsibilities. They're not there to decide whether or not something is good for the county or bad for the county, they're there to determine whether or not the code is being followed. So, thank you.
Clarence Stark.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Clarence Stark, 1203 County Road 70. I speak before you today regarding the Washington County Planning and Zoning Commission. While I don't agree with your decision to clean house and start over with the commission, I believe I understand why you get it. The proposal to reduce the commission membership to five and change the residency requirement to a minimum of two years needs work. Working with a nine-member commission might be difficult at times, however, I have not directly observed a discourse in the past commission. They appeared to me to support the interests of the county. Our system offers a pathway to maneuver through the zoning process. There are always a few who don't want to navigate the process and take shortcuts. In my opinion, a five-member commission does not give adequate representation to the majority of the county. A minimum, minimum of seven members is needed for good representation. The residency requirement of two years in the county to qualify for employment is just too short. I believe that it takes more time than that to gain an understanding of the culture of an area and as to why current codes and regulations have been put in place. A minimum of five years of residency is needed to learn the ropes, so to speak, so to speak. Whatever your decision, we, the residents of the county, will survive. Some of those who don't want to live with it will bring lawsuits. That is their right, as permitted by our current form of government. As a final note, I find it very sad that oftentimes our county employees have found themselves as the target of a select few, those who think they can get their way by being a bully. The loudest voice in the room is seldom the smartest. You gentlemen are the gladiators in the arena. Thank you for your service.
Rick Keys.
Rick Keys, Middale, Idaho. We came to Washington County from a little larger county, and they had their land use code so clean, including a separate subdivision code, that it did not need interpretation. Anyone could understand it, and it respected every property owner's rights. No favors could be used at all. Consequently, the planning and zoning board decades ago disbanded themselves because they were not needed. The code solved every problem. And I think here, I doubt if code changes are going to work. I think it needs to be scrapped and start from scratch, respecting every property owner equally. Thank you.
Dan Rambelman. Creed Noah.
Thank you for the hearing. This is good. The Planning and Zoning Commission is, it's a treasure. And I can't, I can't exaggerate how important it is to keep that diversity, nine members, a minimum of five years, that's a really good idea. I've heard a lot of excellent points made. I'll keep it simple. It's, it's, it's a treasure that you have that many people willing to serve. And, and listen, listen to the issues and, and help you make good decisions on planning and zoning. So I, I urge you to call them up, ask them to forgive you for firing them, and bring them all back on.
Dave, there's Diane Merriman.
Hi, thank you, thank you for the hearing. I'm a little bit nervous, so I'll apologize if my voice cracks. First, I want to tell you that I'm very much against the rules changes and the code changes that are being proposed. I'm really, really sorry to the people that lost their jobs so unceremoniously. I think it's very inappropriate, and I'm very sad that through bullying tactics they, they were treated that way. Some of us here enjoy the rules. Some of us enjoy the rules and the codes that are part of this county. It gives us some assurance that our property is protected from unwanted overdevelopment. Some of us bought here because of the rules and the codes that were in place, not in spite of them. We like knowing that through the rules and the codes that are in place, that we would have a voice before any permits are issued for variances to those codes. We live here because we enjoy a real life. We like knowing that limited building permits helps to keep our groundwater protected. It gives us a bit of peace of mind to know that before more sewage systems are going to be put into our area, that there are going to be the correct permits and the permit, the correct codes are going to be followed in order to do that. Otherwise, we all have to deal with polluted groundwater. I do not agree with Mr. Pierce's interpretation of the split rules in this county. I don't believe that the interpretation of one person should be allowed to throw out a rule which has guided planning and zoning for decades. The split rule on the twenty-acre properties has continued to protect Washington County from overdevelopment and to make it certain that things are done correctly. If people are not, if the codes and rules are not to people's liking, they should not assume that the rules will simply be changed or not enforced for their priorities. Because some of us have different priorities. We enjoy living in the country, we enjoy not looking at someone else's backyard. We enjoy our privacy, less noise, and fresh water and clean air. Thank you.
George, did you want to speak? Donna Lake.
Miss Fisherman, Member of the Committee, I'm Donna Lake, I'm 2307 Tow Road, Middale, Idaho, right-time resident. When I was on P&amp;Z, I had many questions that I asked, how we got some of our code. No one could tell me. I think that P&amp;Z does need to be organized. So one day I just, I thought, "How did we get here?". So I did some history of planning and zoning in our county, if I'm allowed to go on. Zoning is a law that divides. Zoning is a law that divides the jurisdiction's land into zones and limits how land can be used. Zoning uses various land use laws enforced through police power to exercise authority over privately-owned real property. The Standard State Zoning Enabling Act is a federal planning document drafted and published through the United States Commerce Department, 1922, which gives states a model to enact their own zoning enabling laws. The genius for this act is the initiative of Herbert Hoover, while Secretary of Commerce to increase home ownership in the United States. On April 5th, 1971, County Commissioner Alvin Craig called a meeting of the Council of Government together and introduced Howard Tankserly, who was Extension Leader of Community and Resource Development from the University of Idaho. Tankserly explained there were seven different federal government agencies loaning money on housing. President Nixon's reorganization plan is to have one responsible agency for housing loans. Tankserly stated Idaho was working with the District Council of Governments plus Soil Conservation District from HUD 701. The direction of planning would have three functions. One, find out what you have. Two, decide what you want to do of it. Three, do it or implement it. This planning is no more than land use control. The city and county planning commission under comprehensive land use would have, one, police power zoning. This would have burden of proof on the owner or zone. Two, subdivision regulations, restrictive ordinances, streets, roads, sewers, et cetera. Three, be simple, land purchase. Four, easements, do not buy property or buy right of way into the area. Mr. Fornell explained how the Economic Development District is to act as an industrial and economic agent and provide technical advice on planning and zoning. It was decided by the committee that their first order business would be to set up land use map of the county. It should be explained that the commissioners only accept the document from the committee. Final exception doesn't, acceptance doesn't occur until the people approve it. January 24th, 1972, Bayman Inc. reported the commissioners have not accepted the proposal ordinance until the land use map is completed. Tankserly mentioned.
It's time.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our hearing today. This is a public hearing.
I signed up to speak.
What's your name?
Robert Benatz. Thank you, commissioners and neighbors in Washington County. Thank you for coming out tonight. My name's Robert Benatz. I moved here more than five years ago, so I guess I'm kind of entrenched as much as we're supposed to be. I paid attention to the commissioners and on this matter. I don't think it's that important. I think complying with the state's requirement of two years is satisfactory. We're all in the same boat, whether you're here one year, you're a resident, you're going to be impacted, and it's time to learn. How better to learn than to get involved? So as far as the amount of commissioners, I'm for the 12. I think the more involvement, the better. And as far as the past commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, I give them respect for their time, their involvement, their effort, the toil they put into the process. But the facts are that as I was sitting there watching this all develop, they're the ones that pushed this whole event with a moratorium, which ultimately ended up with a huge lawsuit. And I don't blame the commissioners. I don't think they're responsible. I don't think they had a choice. That's my opinion. I don't know if it's true or not, but that's my opinion. I don't think they had a choice. If they had a choice, they might have all kept the same commissioners. But it's not, how many Planning and Zoning commissioners, I think is the issue. It's who they are as people, what they're about, what their priorities are. That's the important thing. And also, will they take training? Will they conform to the laws and ordinances? Can they come up, like others have said, go by the ordinances? My opinion, by watching, we haven't been running this county by the ordinances. The big thing is saving A1 ag land, and the reality of it is, there's no further development in any of the cities that doesn't infringe on A1 land. So every permit is coming up against the A1 issue. We want to continue with, to hold that, we should go by the 541 ag zoning that says, number one, there shouldn't be subdivisions on A1 ground, and two, the 20 acres is all that's necessary for a home. That would simplify things, everybody would understand, and it wouldn't be a commissioner's investigation to figure out whether you can build a house on the land you bought. So I'm tired of the motherheading of every building permit, go wait for the Planning and Zoning Office.
I would sign up to talk too.
Come on up there, Mike.
I'm Mike Tech from Midville, Idaho, and thank you commissioners for listening to talk and going through his. I would like Washington County to adopt state code whenever we do, you know, go follow down from the state. The previous P&amp;Z board was dissolved and should remain so. It was a unanimous vote at a meeting recently where the people present voted unanimously to vote no confidence in our Washington County prosecutor, Drew Pierce. He was elected by 63% of the citizens of this county. He is our choice. We do not want higher outside counsel. He is trained to advise on these matters. And, you know, it, and I don't know how, the P&amp;Z, there was 63% of the people in the county voted for him, but the P&amp;Z, the people present, voted unanimously. If it wasn't following one person or they didn't take a lead, someone should have voted confidence in Drew Pierce. There's something going wrong there because they all voted the same way. That's a sign that they're following one person. I would be in favor of a five-member boat, board, consisting of citizens that have lived in the county for two or more years, and start out fresh. There's a lot of people, they just quit, they quit taking advice from new people. The P&amp;Z board, they did as they pleased, they didn't follow you guys' direction. And insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. Thank you.
If I haven't missed anyone else this evening, this will conclude our hearing. No decisions. Did you sign up to speak?
Yeah, when I came, I'm like...
You did sign, you did sign up or you didn't?
No, I said deny, but I would like to say you were.
I oppose your decision to go from nine panel to a five panel and taking it from two, or five years to two years. I've been through the planning and zoning process for a special use permit twice. It was simple, there were a diverse group of people on that panel. The $600 fee, I did not feel was out of line, I was happy to pay their mileage. I feel today that this meeting is a technicality. P&amp;Z board has been fired, and much of the planning and zoning staff has been released. Planning and zoning decisions need to be transparent and held out of executive session going forward. As commissioners, be true leaders and do what's right for this county today and for its future generations. Allow four splits on original parcel. Keep the Planning and Zoning Commission at nine people, five years. And don't let litigation and lawyers scare you into poor decisions.
Did you sign in? All right. This is the conclusion of this hearing. We're not making any decisions this evening. When we meet in the future, we'll do our deliberation and we'll come to a conclusion. I want to thank everyone for coming this evening, showing up. I think they had a good showing, and I appreciate all the information and the time. Make the motion that we move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to second to adjourn. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you very much.